All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at six, actually, the work session to order is six oh five. We will hold off on the pledge of allegiance until we start the regular meeting. Tell you, Mr. Wooder.
All right, thank you, Stephanie. So again, as part of the board strategic goal to be more informed, you guys wanted to have these workshop sessions for a variety of topics that interested the board. One of the ones that we kind of try to do every year is one on the budget. So it's been a few years, I think, so we did the budget one. So I went through my notes, pulled out some stuff and updated it. Again, really, our goal, I think, is to try to keep this around a normal workshop time of a half an hour. But then, really, again, this is for you guys, ask questions on the budget process. I'm gonna show you where some useful information is, website links, stuff on our website. And then, again, really, like, from a real macro level, go through how the school budget is comprised and the impacts that certain increases might have on the line items. So that said, I think the first thing to go explore is what is available on our website, because it is a wealth of information. So anyone can log on, check out this great resource. Again, I personally like to update it as often as I can, so I'll show you guys how to get there. So again, this is a wedding point webpage, go to district, there's a dropdown, and you'll see budget and taxes. So this is, again, that landing page, there's a whole bunch of good information and historical information over on the right. All these drop down, but you'll see it goes back, you know, twenty seventeen, eighteen budget info. And so each one of these years, twenty seventeen, eighteen, twenty nineteen, you can see the very consistent labeled reports that are same for each of those years. So really, like, a five-year history of all of that information. So we have, the ST three is really a state term, but this is a breakout of every one of our account codes, again, that do comprise our budget. When we go through the actual budget presentations and what has to be reported, and most publications publicly is more of a condensed format by category. So it's ST three format, really, present down to specific accounts, if anyone ever wanted to know. And then we have our budget hearing here, which, again, is one of those places where you'll see the condensed categories. Because that's, again, how it has to be listed out for the state reporting. So each one of these years, you'll have the actual breakdown account codes, you'll have our budget hearing, which we always do that first Tuesday in May, before the budget vote. And then, again, the budget newsletter for all those years is here as well, and that's what gets sent out to every resident in the district. So again, if you ever wanted to go there, all that stuff's there, the links are there. Let's see. Your budget newsletter for that year seventeen eighteen goes through where a budget was, thirty-four million, what we were proposing, and you kind of get the tax levy increases, budget increases for that time. Okay, I just like to, for people to be aware of what's out there, because a lot of people, you know, it's transparency, really, I mean, all this public information, anyone ever wanted to know, you know, what this or that was, it's all right there for you. And a couple of other things over the years that I've liked, that we did a lot of work on, I've kept on this website for anyone that was interested. Again, the state had a big two billion dollar bond referendum back in twenty fourteen that our resident New York State voted on. And what we did with the first part of our project, again, was here, and that was actually where we did the initial pre-K edition. So if you guys want to even go back there and see what the, when you point schools, ever do with their smart schools money, here's all that information, presentations, all that great stuff. Audit reports, again, legally required, post our external audit report on the website, that's where it lives. This is, again, a wealth of information for anyone that needs some material to go to sleep at night. Yeah, I don't know how you open it, because it's like over a hundred pages, but, again, any financial information you were curious about would be there. And again, that gets updated every year when we get our audit done. The board, I think most of you are familiar with, we went through a tough time. Two years ago, we had a, you know, a community gathering or support of the alternative veterans' tax exemption. You know, there was a big clip for that back then, we went through it, we did a lot of research, again, if you guys remember what that really does, it shifts the tax burden from our community. It basically was an exemption for a veteran. We figured out numbers to it, and again, we decided, as a board collectively, and with a lot of research, a lot of meetings, that we did not offer that exemption at that time. But that's the presentation goes through all that detail. Again, it's just a historical thing, I like kind of keeping that there, and for anyone to ever want to know, hey, did Woody Point ever talk about that tax exemption? Yeah, we did, back on February, I guess, twenty sixteen, we had a presentation, and I'm sure you guys are familiar with that process. So again, it's going back through, there's the years, there's a couple of other random categories that were required to put on here. Again, every year, we get more and more state requirements, what needs to be posted publicly, which is great. But this is another state report, reporting element that we have to do to be compliant, it's called this budget transparency report, and it's broken down into lots of sections. But, again, it's on there for anyone that's curious. And we have our new smart school submission, which was going to use up the remainder of our smart schools allocation. We've been waiting, obviously, it says twenty twenty-one in there, we've been waiting over a year for state approval on that. No real reason why it's taken so long, except that it's a state department that isn't a full-time department, and they meet quarterly, basically. And even then, during COVID, they did not really meet quarterly all that time. There's some traction, and things are moving, we're hoping to hear a decision on our plan being approved shortly, but, again, we have not heard that yet. Again, even just going back to this last year, the current operating year, here's our three reports for anyone that's curious, just a good, again, historical appearance of information. Some of these other things, which I think are cool, for anyone that wanted to know, again, they're all dropdown menus, but we have school tax info. Again, always keep current with whatever the payment, you know, terms and conditions are. We honestly go through from kind to collect that, most districts in our area now are utilizing that service, and also anyone that wants to look up their tax bill, here's a link to do so. Again, just some random information, Star changes a few years ago, but some people still look at that information, so, again, we just kind of keep that historical aspect on here, if anything, that may impact some of our community members. So, again, between this webpage and all these reports on here, it's a well-known information brand, I was curious, so that's a good way to start out. I do want to go, let me jump around a little bit here, I'll go to another good resource, and this is some information that was in your packet that we wanted to talk about tonight. I'm gonna show you how to get to it.
Before you leave this website, I mean, there is a ton of really good information on here, but maybe one of the things that we can do as a district is sort of like, we look at how things are named and learned, so it becomes more organized. Because I see, like, we got twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three, but then the rest of them are twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty, twenty-two. So it makes things start getting into a different organizational pattern, and I'm not sure how the website is working itself personally. So, like, you know, could we maybe take a quick look at how this becomes more organized and?
Yeah, we can do that, Chris, I'll tell you, it was, and you could see those.
These are horrible things to keep organized, I, I understand.
Yeah, honestly, when we did the website update, some of these things did go a little wonky, but you can see, these three years, it is a very consistent format. So we'll, we'll go back and double-check it, you know, with this new PR people all the time, but the website upgrade actually did bounce some formatting things that we're still finding some issues with, but yes, I will definitely make sure.
Yeah, and then I saw in twenty twenty-one, they included the vote results, but they don't have it anyplace else, why didn't we include it there, we didn't do it anyplace else?
I think that's for the cap of projects.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, just, just. And also, just, that's the thing, with having, constantly having different PR people, yeah, I know. So, it is, I understand a hundred percent.
I take a lot of pride, so I definitely will clean it up, I have OCD, so absolutely.
Yeah. Thanks.
Yeah.
It is, it's horrible, because web-based stuff will make it sort of alphabetical order, and it makes it very hard.
All right, so I will clean that up, but again, for anyone else interested, that information is there, it'll be obviously bring it up over the next few weeks. Another good, again, source of information, which you guys have in your packet, is basically, when you point specific demographic and state aid percentages. Which is very important, obviously, because we are very heavily reliant on state aid and various other demographic information. So we wonder, you know, how do I find out how many points mean aided and what we're being allocated? This is where I go to look, all right, so, again, it's all public information, pay for the service, but, again, nothing fancy, I'm gonna go Google, and it's another BOSI's called BusStar three. BOSI's. And if you click it. Be a little more specific. The state aid, really planning. Here's our question. So this is, again, like, we have broom title of BOSI's, this is another BOSI's in another part of your state, we cross-contract for a service, and it's called state planning. Bear with me while I find this, I'm a little scattered. So, again, BusStar three BOSI's, financial, and then here it is, state aid or financial planning. So this is a service that this BOSI's offers. And they offer, really, for me specifically, and a lot of people in my role, monthly PD opportunities, webinars, these cafe talks, they print out calendar schedules, everything to keep apprised of. They even give us really, like, again, a micro-level detailed budget counter and certain dates that we need to comply with to be compliant with New York State. So this is where that information comes from, it's through this service, but within here, they have, again, links, and one of these is resources. So we go here, and this is a really cool chart, but it's multi-year comparison state aid package, and this is the chart that's in front of you guys in your packet. Yeah. And so it's kind of cool, because, again, they do this for the whole state, so, like, of all seven hundred school districts in New York State, this works, this spreadsheet will work, and how they do that is, they enable it, so it's a lot of password-protected cells that you can't mess with. But you can put in the school's bed's number, which, very wooden point, again, I just know that, because I do it all the time. They have a tab on the bottom where, if you want to look up any of the other schools, you can look those numbers up. So I'm gonna type in your school's bed number, and I could see it generated Woody Point's numbers.
Oh, three, one.
Oh, three, one, four, oh.
Thank you.
Yep, and again, Chris, um, if you wanted to, if you scroll over, they'll have a district list here on the tab.
I see it.
Yeah, and they, they'll have all those numbers there, for, if you want to look for Vestal, whatever school in Long Island is.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Yep. So, again, this is the very first sheet, all these are very detailed and useful reports, but the things that I want to focus on, there's really two sections. And I think the biggest one, and I like the trend data on here, and I know it's a lot of people in the back to read, but this line is called combined wealth ratio, CWR. And this is a very, very important factor in how school districts in your state are aided, and basically, all you need to know is that the state average is a one. Right, so if you have a one, you have the state average. You have less than a one, that means you're more poor, you're, you're more away from that average wealth income, right, so you're a poorer district. You have districts on Long Island that could be higher, and it doesn't go up to two, it could be three, four, whatever. So when you look at this, and the years go from twenty eighteen, nineteen, and they have one, two, three, four, five years of data here, you could see, five years ago, we were at basically point four, three, seven. So if the state average was at one, we're at that lower of a number, which shows, again, overall, the Woody Points wealth compared to the state. And that alone would be alarming, but I think what's more concerning is if you look at the last five years, the trend of where it went, we have gotten more poor compared to the state in the last five years. And what that means is that number, that point four, three, seven, it's gone down every single year. Again, just, when you study numbers and data and try to understand a pattern, clearly, that's a downward trend, and what happens is, the more you are, the more state aid you'll, you'll get, higher percentage of reimbursement, right? There are caps and whatnot, but you could see that relates to our numbers here, which are all of our state aid percentages. So public access cost, you know, for high-cost students, basically, the state says, you know, whatever number up to thirty-five thousand dollars, the school has to absorb the student cost of school, more than thirty-five thousand, the state will give us eight on that student. So that's called public access cost, what we get is, after that certain dollars, that field's map, we were getting seventy-seven point eight percent aid back on whatever we spent on that child. And as you see, we got four over those years, so now that percentage has gone up to seven, from seventy-seven point eight to eighty-one point three percent. Which, in airtime, it's great, we're getting a higher rate percentage, but, again, it relates to showing that, overall, where you are a, you know, less wealthy district. And you can see that pattern over all these percentages, honestly, product access costs, transportation aid, you'll see the flat ninety, that's because that's already the highest that you can get back. So not every single transportation expenditure is eligible for transportation aid, but the majority of them are, and that's why, again, as far as transportation aid goes, it is a very useful aid tool for the, for our district specifically. For every dollar we spend, we approximately ninety percent back in state of them, so that's a great thing. I'm gonna, so keeping in mind, right, that we have been this downward trend of a lower combined wealth ratio, so our district is relatively poor, or has done worse over the last five years than the rest of the state. We want to talk about school meals here, and I know that's a hot topic, and I gave you this guy, the report as well in your packets. Now, common sense would say if our district is less wealthy over the last five years, and our eight percentages are going up, this is an interesting number of our three-year average free and reduced lunch prices. Because, again, that's a percentage based off of income in our district. So, overall, all these other numbers are trending that we are, again, less wealthy, fair to state, this number has gone the opposite way. So, five years ago, sixty-three percent of our student population was eligible for a free or reduced lunch, and then, oh yeah, by the way, we had COVID in here, where everyone got free meals, which was fantastic. But what happened was, those people that were filling out applications to get free meals, lost incentive to do so, because they were already getting free meals, they no longer had to fill out those applications, and that's a direct, not necessarily consequence, but that, that's a direct action of offering free meals, right? So it was great, everyone got free meals, but now, this year, we're not, we're still trying to get those applications filled out back to that level, because, again, according to that data, I would like to think our number would probably be right around where it was, or higher, and maybe we could offer free meals for everyone. But we really struggle trying to get those applications returned, we even have, you know, grant meetings where we're trying to figure out, is there a creative way of getting, you know, a community, you know, outreach, and really just get the word out that, you know, even though you don't necessarily have to fill out this application, it does help the school, obviously, with these numbers, and it does have a direct effect on everyone else in our school. Because if we hit those percentages, we could, in theory, offer free and reduce lunch for everyone.
And it also helps us qualify for all sorts of other things, yes, a lot of things.
Question, um, so I know there's direct certification, if you qualify for something else, how does that work? Because, I mean, are we just privy to that knowledge, or is that something we can get from, yeah, Bowley County, or how does?
Yep, so that's our power, BOSI Service we sign up for, and the administration of BOSI Food Service, they get those direct cert lists, they pull, I think, I don't know, it's daily or monthly, my understanding, to make sure it's always those current information, but, yeah, anyone that is eligible through the county with food stamps, heaps, whatever those benefits are, they automatically get free meals at the school.
So it just kicks in here, and they change it, so nothing has to be filled in in addition.
Correct.
Which that might cause problems, too, that it's like, oh, well, it's not a bad thing, it's a good thing, but it's like, well, how did you get in, I, I should qualify, too, how come you didn't have to fill anything out? That's like, well, I didn't, and I'm just saying that it's, yeah, people might not realize it, just because this person was directly certified, they not, I don't know why, you would have to fill it out, maybe you're reduced, but it would, or even free, but you have to still fill it out.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, I'm just trying to figure out why, yeah, and why it might be as well, so.
And we've had pushes before, like, when we, we'd get the list of, you know, who obviously was not a direct cert, but still were eligible, and in the past, we'd, we'd have the secretaries follow his families and say, hey, this is a really important school, and for your child, because you can get free lunches, and, you know, we always had pushes like that, but that doesn't catch any of the new people, you know, that weren't on the list prior, right? So, anyway, again, I, I think, when we're looking at numbers and data, the fact that, you know, you would think everything's trending, again, in a less wealthy area of a situation, here, those numbers show a different story, where it looks like, again, the opposite. So, again, going in line with that conversation of, you know, obviously, everyone wants free reduced meals to everyone in our whole district, that number does not help, you know, and it's kind of part of the situation we're in, where we don't qualify for. Keeping with the, the budget workshop, and, again, just wanting to explain, again, kind of a higher level context of all these numbers and information, trying to show you guys where you can get it, obviously, I'm doing this quickly, but if you want to look at it after, or, you know, next week, whatever, just give me a call, and I can walk you through how to find this stuff, too. So, again, just moving on to try to, so we can start the regular board meeting. And, again, this is another one of your packet, and, again, really, high-low macro level way of looking at our school budget. Again, clearly, you guys know a lot more goes into this, these are nice round numbers for sake of what we're doing here. But if you want to break down our school budget in several of the key categories, this would be it. So we have salaries, benefits, track expenses, BOSI's, debt borrowing, which, again, is a funny thing, because it may be a higher number, but that gets offset washed with state aid. Then we have, yeah, a few other things in there, health insurance, obviously, the big one, used to be even larger, until, again, we made that shift, our retiree population going to a Medicare advantage plan. Again, that was, yeah, financially, a really good move at the time, and it was actually a win-win, because we've been in that plan now for over close to two years, and most retirees, well, I haven't heard a single complaint about the plan, compared to, we're all pretty happy about it. So, again, going back through this on a really high macro level, I'm gonna just show you quickly how we can build the budget, see, again, the thought process of how certain things work. Total salaries, again, we're at almost fifteen million dollars, right? So when you think of the school, right, we have a thirty-eight million dollar budget, it's, it's a lot of money, right? Fifteen million of that is strictly in salaries and people, and that's a good thing, right? Most of the people that work here in the school live here in the community, so, you know, it kind of is like reinvesting back in community itself, but it's also, we're very heavy personnel work, you know, we're a service industry, to an extent, we provide education, we have to employ people to provide that education. I think you guys all know, we have different levels of salaries, right? We have faculty that have to have a master's degree to be in the classroom, so we have a lot of other people that work in the district, again, bus drivers, cleaners, aides, and the people that are around that minimum wage, right? And I think we know the push for minimum wage has had a major impact on everyone, small businesses and large places like ourselves, the school, because I'll tell you, the population of people that make about minimum wage in our district, it's a lot, it's a couple hundred people. And every time that minimum wage goes up, and went up a dollar this past year, that's a big impact. So when we're looking at, you know, every year, and you want to say, whatever you want to say, salary should go up, everyone has a number in their head, salaries every year should go up two percent, three percent, five percent. That population of minimum wage, minimum wage, they are hovering around five percent, because, again, you're making thirteen, twenty an hour, and also, you're making fourteen, twenty, and you do the math, and you multiply that by hundreds of people for school, that has been a, a big cost driver for us. And, again, it's a matter of equity and fairness for all the other staff, you know, so now you got people coming off the street, making the same amount of money as people that have been here twenty years. It's a hard sell, and it's a hard thing to try to, to make equitable and make great, again, we try to do what we can in negotiations, but it does leave a lot of hard feelings. Again, faculty and instructional and admin and all those other places, too, you know, it's hard to say one group deserves a higher raise than other people. Perfect rule, if I only get the same raise, you know, I mean, that's, that would be great, but that's not how it really works. So when we look at salaries, and obviously, everyone knows when you go to the grocery store, what you're paying, or when you go to the fuel tank, what you're paying, everything's higher, right? A lot of it's driven by, again, these increases in inflation, the, the economy, again, rollout of extra money from stimulus funds and federal funds and state funds, and it's like, you know, it's, it's kind of crazy, the, the printing of money lately, but it all has an impact, that's also why eggs are five dollars a dozen, and whatever you want to say, you know, that's, we're paying for it, one way or the other, right? So when we look at salaries, and we're looking at next year, if you want a relative number for what salaries will approximately be increased budget to budget, again, you could say five percent, and that's not a crazy number with minimum wage in space. Payroll taxes, again, associated with that, we have to pay, like, with this year, Medicare social security tax program gets a little bit older, yeah, and you're paying five percent more in salaries, pay five percent more on that. Contractual expenses, I'll tell you, our fuel went up way more than five percent last year, and it was a killer, and you'll see that in a little bit later in some of the stuff that Joanne does with budget presentation. So we could say conservatively, our contractual expenses, everything, five percent. You look at BOSI's, well, guess what, they're a service industry, too, right, we buy services from BOSI's, they have staff, they're getting those five percent raises, it's all a trickle-down effect, right? So if you want to go down borrowings, or say five percent, you kind of see where this goes, right? So if everything here increases five percent, right? Even health insurance, I mean, you're talking about, okay, a thing where we, we cut a lot of, what's that, Chris?
I was, my numbers aren't doing what yours is doing, because we got a PDF copy of it.
Okay, it's Excel formulas, but, yeah, I get it, so, anyway, again, I can always give you some Excel sheet if you want it.
Yep, sorry.
So, in, in a nutshell, again, you can see, also, our budget increased one point nine million dollars, and it's not a crazy stretch of the imagination, right? You know, some of these probably aren't quite five percent, but some of these are more than five percent, you know? So, again, looking at how budget goes from year to year, that's what, you know, me, Joanne, and department heads, and everyone try to figure out in the next few weeks, realistically, what is that number? It's not five percent, is it three, is it seven? And that's where we'll come to every month with those updates of where, where we're currently at, so that's the one way of looking at the expense side of it, the other side's the revenue side. So, again, we have, here's our foundation aid, which is great, I mean, it's ninety million dollars of our thirty-eight million dollar budget, it's over fifty percent of our state, our, our budget is foundation aid. Again, all intent and purposes, that should be for general operational needs, we should have a discussion about where we want to spend it, the state has been, you know, has been getting a little creative in, in what they're telling us we can spend it on. Again, Joanne will talk about that a little bit in her presentation, and then we have this other state aid, a lot of that's reimbursement-based, so other state aid, again, it's that debt borrowing stuff, so we're paying a debt expense, or we're borrowing money from projects and buses, we're getting that back in state aid, right? So we try to make those wash every year, so we got that, we have our BOSI's aid, we have our transportation aid, which, again, we're getting nine percent back on. All in all, again, it's about another ten million dollars of the school budget, so state aid is around, you know, thirty million dollars of our thirty-eight million dollar budget, it's about seventy-five percent, it's a big deal, we're very heavily reliant on state aid. Other revenue, again, it's a variety of categories, it, it's really relatively small compared to, again, the state aid, but just to remind the board, it could be everything from admissions for games, which is very minimal. We do charge rent for use of our bus garage, again, we contract for maintenance mechanics, they pay us rent monthly for that space, that's about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar contract. And a couple of other things in there, interest, which was in the big revenue in the past, rates are going up, so we are getting more interest money on our, our balances and cash flow, appropriate fund balance, again, that fluctuates year-to-year, depending on the current climate. But basically, appropriated is what the board is basically saying, we are saying, we're gonna put five thousand dollars of our fund balance towards being the, the budget. It's a very good thing to have at least some in there, you don't want that to be too high, but in theory, it does give you a little cushion, too, if you don't actually need to use it, you have more flexibility in trying to do, meet your four percent savings from year to year. The tax levy, again, you can see, now that you can see, I can barely see it from here, but it's about eight point five million, and, again, last year, which was the first time since I've been here, and the first time I, I could track down in a long time, we went out with a zero percent increase. So that was, again, something we were very, very proud of, to be able to do. So, again, in theory, you know, foundation aid, that's gonna be your key driver, right? That makes up fifty percent of our budget, state aid, again, is a lot of reimbursement-based stuff, seventy-five percent of there, so when you're looking at, again, macro level, our expenses are going up one point nine million, that's got to come from one of these resources, right? And then, there, it comes from two places, our foundation aid, or our tax levy, or we can increase and use our, our savings account, our fund balance, our reserves. And that's kind of how you, again, at the end of the day, make this number meet that number, and, you know, we go out to the public for support. I know that was quick, I know I glossed through a lot of it, again, trying to keep that close to the half-hour window, but they did pretty good on, but if you have any questions, let me know.
Do we see foundation aid or state aid increasing for us at all?
Oh, yeah, and that's gonna be in the budget presentation, Joanne's gonna do a little bit here, again, it's actually been very, very good news, I won't burst her bubbles, I'll let her do that, but, um, yeah, I'm serious, but, there you go, yeah, so more, more information comes shortly on that.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? We're going to end the work session at six thirty-five. May have a motion, so. Um, I heard Chris and Kathy. All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? I'm going to call our regular meeting in order at six thirty-six. And if everybody could please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Um, I believe we do have a need of an executive session. So we are going to recess at six thirty-seven, take your discussion on contractual matters. May have a motion, so. Um, I heard Chris and who else, Kathy, thank you. All those in favor, all right, any opposed, any abstain? Okay, we will be as quickly, as quick as we possibly. We are going to recommun in our regular meeting. At six forty-six. For us, contents, we have none. Um, policies for first reading. Um, we need to approve policy number five, six, seven, four, use of glass containers. For first reading for removal. They have a motion? I heard Tom and Seth, you Brian? Any questions or comments?
So this house is reinforced, it was an old policy that we used to have. There are. Expectations within this at the school level that already exist. So, um, this, I mean, I I kind of. I know this policy has been looked at before and I don't know why we didn't do it then, but.
Any questions from the board?
And and by all the other criteria, it's not a required policy, it's not a recommended policy, it's not a.
It's just there.
Yes, it's just.
All right, all those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Okay, um, policy number six one five three, conditional appointment and emergency conditional appointment student safety policy for first reading. They have a motion? Thank you, Brian. And a second?
You have something I don't see.
I have a different agenda maybe? Some of our agendas have it and some of them don't.
Yeah, the next one is public sales on school property.
Alright, so we're going to skip that one. Okay, um, and. Keep this note, new system policies for second reading. Um, policy number three, two, four, zero, public sales on school property for second reading, may have a motion, so. Thank you, Kathy and Eddie. Any questions or comments?
Uh, again, just uh as we went over in the first reading, this was one that. Uh, it's not required, but we do uh reference this policy for uh various, um, yes, situations that arise. Uh, but we did see an opportunity to make it, make it obviously more uh current. Um, and again, we never offered permits per se to uh have public sales on school property. But merely typically written uh permission through email form or whatever. So that's kind of what we're proposing, uh just a small tweak to that policy to make it uh more in line with current practice.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Policy number three, two, four, one, advertising in schools for second reading. You have a motion? Thank you, Chris. How about this one?
Uh, yeah, so, um. Yeah, and this one is not required, but it is a policy we do reference. Um, when we were looking at this one specifically, uh the Erie One uh recommended language, uh it did seem to be. Really better for our situation and included all requirements of what you're supposed to comply with. Um, and they had a reference specifically with uh no advertising schools, people flip with the uh rules and board regents. Which again is something that specifically addressed in their state constitution. So those two additions to the policy would basically make it more in line and and the legal requirement.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Through policy number three, two, four, two, solicitation of funds for second reading, may have a motion? Thank you, Kathy, and a second? Thank you, Brian.
Um, so again, this one had a little bit more conversation, uh last meeting for the first uh reading. Um, and I did add in there a recommendation from that meeting. Um, and we were trying to address where all those situations that like a basketball game where various community benefits. Um, or, you know, for uh community support for whatever situation may have happened. A lot of fundraising does occur at those types of events, so we didn't really want to exclude all that per se. Um, but we wanted to make sure it covered all bases. So, uh, again, when you read the first sentence of the new policy, there would be no soliciting of financial donations from members of the public. Uh, this was a change from the first to the second reading, we had in or any other affiliation, well, school concession. And I think that was kind of what we were trying to cover, were all our bases, not just, you know, a public uh forum. Um, and again, uh, we always like to have the disclaimer, the second uh sentence of that policy. Uh, which is, it would be a new ad, which is good. Uh, the superintendent has the authority to make exceptions to the policy in case it's worse, solicitation is considered to be in the best interest of the district. So it really does cover any of those things that, you know, it goes technically against policy. But obviously, um, that situation would warrant it, it could be approved by the superintendent.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Approve the removal of policy number seven, one, five, zero, educational services for married pregnant students for second reading, may have a motion? So, thank you, Chris, and a second, sorry. I heard Tom.
So this is the one we're removing because it's not a required policy because we educate all students.
Any questions from the board? Those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Removal of policy number seventeen, one, two, minimum yearly course requirements for second reading, may have a motion? Thank you, Brian. And a second? Thank you, Eddie. Questions or comments?
So again, this is one that we are recommending to remove because it's not required and these requirements are not a policy. But are part of our inly reviewed high school course guide.
Except by the state, right?
Well, parts of them are, yeah.
Thanks. Any other question on the board? All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Approve the removal of policy number one, three, three, two, duties of the school district treasurer for second reading. May have a motion, so. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Chris. Questions or comments?
So again, the the next, the several uh policies for removal are ones that are really job descriptions. We did get legal guidance that, um, they don't need to be policy because it is uh defined by uh near state law. So again, in an effort to clean up the policies, we're proposing to just get rid of all of those.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Removal of policy number one, three, 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 duties of the tax collector for second reading, may have a motion? Thank you, Eddie. And a second? Thank you, Chris. This one is for the same. Any questions on this one? And all those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Removal of policy number one, three, three, four, duties of the independent auditor for second reading, may have a motion? Thank you, Kathy, and a second? Thank you, Brian. Anybody have any questions on this one? All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Removal of policy number one, three, three, five, duties of the school activities pressure, may have a motion? Thank you, what you, Brian? Thank you, Chris. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Removal of policy number one, three, three, six, duties of the school attorney for second reading, may have a motion? Second? Thank you, Eddie. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Removal of policy number one, three, three, seven, duties of the school physician for second reading, we have a motion? Thank you, Tom, and a second? Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Prove the removal of policy number seven, five, one, one, immunization of students for second reading, may have a motion? Kathy and Brian. Questions or comments?
This is a hundred percent because we have to file the rest of New York City.
So that's, that's definitely, and so actually our policy is wrong because New York State um changes the requirements. And it makes it seem like we are instituting this policy, but really the state health department gives us this policy that we have to follow. So that's why.
Like that, I just, I would like it, I was gonna say, just for the record, it could be listed, why?
Yes, and we did ask questions, no surprise there about what that was about and 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 once we explain that.
And the next one.
Yeah, like this gives me impression that somehow we're.
Yep.
Saying this is our policy, but it's not, it's right.
And this. Eradicates the possibility of changes being made by the state and then our policy in the interim being incorrect.
Right, right.
Because we have to follow what the state says regardless.
Right, and it refers to this policy as something that no longer exists, which is the religious exemption, that the next one is about their religious exemption, and again, those are all state.
All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Removal of policy number seven, five, one, one, point, one, request for religious exemption from the immunization for second reading, may have a motion? Thank you, Eddie. And a second? Any questions?
So again, that.
Just so in reference, that's.
Yeah, I I I agree with Tom that we as a board need to make sure that we. Make sure our public understands that this is a state requirement, no matter what our thoughts or feelings are, we have to obey the state rules because we are.
Because if we, if it just says that we're for the removal, and I don't. If people want to get angry at me, I don't really. But it's just that we're following procedures of what it has to be and it's not a a flaw. Right, so at least it's listed that we have no control that way.
All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Okay, that brings us to our first opportunity out of two for comments from the public. Um, although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period. We have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. The district clerk will be keeping track of questions and make sure that they are passed to the appropriate persons. I want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain. Any comments or questions about school personnel? Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On those matters, we ask. That you go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we realize that right now our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that. Members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner. And demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that speakers, please address their comments to the board directly rather than to the audience. In the unlikely event that the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting in return once order has been restored. The board will now entertain public comments. Each individual speaker is allowed in three minutes, the individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. Please state your name and residency before your begins. And as a reminder, there is a second opportunity at the end of the meeting. That being said. Does anybody have anything they would like to comment upon this evening?
Um, I'm Alexis Sayers, I live in Miles, guys, I've already been up here speaking, so. What I'm doing tonight is just giving you an update on this amazing adventure that I have had, um promoting and advocating for girls wrestling program here. In Whitney Point. Uh, since the time I spoke with you last, I have spent this time gathering as much information as possible about girls wrestling in section four and surrounding areas. I have spoke to numerous head coaches of girls teams in section four also, gathering ideas and support. Uh, I have attended most of the wrestling youth club meetings, youth club. The regular youth club meetings and have um kept in contact with Joanne as well. Um, while doing this, I've gathered all the support I can along the way. Our first goal uh was to create more awareness in our area about wrestling. Um, and our two main. Um, things that we've been really doing is social media, using social media. And um our one big idea was to have an all-girls wrestling clinic. Um, many other. Uh, programs have started that way. And um I think that we had agreed that that would be something that we would love to have. An event here in Whitney Point, so we are moving forward in um creating that. Both are intended, the social media and the clinic, to bring awareness, educate and show the girls what wrestling is all about. Um, the all-girls wrestling clinic, to kind of give you a quick overview, we'd love it K through twelve. We'd love it to be available for all students in our district as well as uh students in other districts. So in surrounding areas, which I think it'll be a little bit bigger than we really have anticipated. I've um been contacted by several parents, um. Uh, staff, administration from other schools and surrounding areas, just from one simple little. To be announced, we might be having a clinic here in Whitney Point, so, which is awesome, social media has been a great platform for that. So many people have reached out and I've been able to reach a lot of different people, which is amazing, um. So we would run it uh here. Um, we can reserve. The gym and we have already called on many people to come and help to see if they can. The girls wrestling pub from Cornell. I have contacted um Destin Garcia and she and her. Club are willing to absolutely do anything, yeah, anything we need, um and that was. Um, and that was through Mason, uh, through Mason Lewis, who comes and helps the varsity team three, two to three times a week already. He will be here assisting and helping also. My goal was to have all girls on the mats, no guys whatsoever. Um, just to have it. An all-girls thing, guys can help, the coaches, of course, the varsity team, everything, but I'd love to roll on the mat with just girls. So that's why I thought with the Cornell team, they're ready to help us with promotion, flyers, free merchandise. Oh yeah, so I was super excited with that. That was just, it blew my mind, the support we got. I know Bill and Dick have amazing contacts with Cornell. Um, so that being said. Um, I have also, which is. Amazing to me, I've reached out to Cheyenne Assistant Sign. So I know not everybody knows who she is. Um, but she is now the head girls high school, the girls coach for the wrestling team at UE. Um, and she has a very long list. I'll only name a few of amazing career achievements. Um, most career wins of eighty-three, tied for fifth in career tech falls with thirty-four. Tied for second in career pins of thirty-four. Two-time national champion and four-time All-American. And the list just keeps, it literally just scrolls right down. So, um, to get her to be a speaker. At this event for us, that was Bill's idea. I reached out, she said absolutely, I'd love to help, send me a date when you have one. So, um, and her team also, her team at UE, which I just got to go see them wrestle, uh, um, a bunch. Uh, we would be lucky and grateful to have her and her team help us with this big event. Um, helping promote. Girls wrestling in a fun, positive environment such as a clinic. Um, I did have a meeting with Murphy to talk about the date last week. Um, we just kind of were looking at schedules and dates of, um. Other sports events coming up. And we figured out May fifth, Friday night, five to seven. Um, would be a to-go date, so Bill's gonna, I talked to Bill today. We're gonna be reserving that on the system on his account. I'm learning some stuff about all of that. Um, but best hopefully put it in the schedule to best get the most number of girls available. I think right now only a softball game was on there. So, um, I was excited about that, definitely. And we have a wonderful committee, um, willing to put the time and effort in to take to create, run and execute this kind of event. Um, from youth club coaches to varsity coaches and more and lots of parents. Um, who, couple of cool things that happened through social media. I got contacted, um. From a public speaker, nonprofit public speaker from Topeka, Kansas. On my little post about having a clinic. And he said. I speak, um, for teen mental health. They're a nonprofit, it's called the Jones Project. I did send the information to Joanne. Um, because I did look into it. He starts these kind of programs, he helped start these kind of programs. He sent me videos of his, um, Board of Education presentations that he's done and he is willing to help. I would love to have another one of these clinics in September and have him come and speak. That would be, that's my big, that wishlist. And so, um, but I've put this much out so far and it's come to fruition, so I'm really excited about that. And I was contacted just, um, from the post that I've been doing from. An alumni, section four alumni wrestler. Um, Victor Coronado, he is now a head. Girls wrestling coach at Ellsworth College in Iowa Falls. And, uh, he's recruiting. So he's like, hey, you got any seniors? And by the way, the other speaker also is the head coach for the girls wrestling, um, at Washburn Rural High School. And it is the largest girls wrestling team in the world, actually. So that was full too. So, uh, thank you for your continued support. I just wanted to give you guys an update, where this is rocking and rolling pretty quick. Um, and we're gonna be moving forward with creating awareness of this straight sport.
Thank you very much for helping and updating us. That's, that's very wonderful.
Good work.
Everyone. Oh, I already knew that. Is there anybody else who would like to speak this evening? Okay. Um, that brings us to the budget presentation with Ms. Sexton.
Did you want to?
Commendations. Did I miss those? No, I'm sorry, I turned the page. No, no, I, I turned the page by accident, sorry about that. So yes, commendations.
Okay, so we're gonna start with, um, high school, uh, art student Valerie Barrows for the honorable mention award in this year's scholastic art and writing competition for the twenty-two years art region. Her artwork will be on display at the R-NOT Art Museum in Elmira. Impressive, um, through March tenth in the ceramics and glass category. I think there's a picture in here. In your binders, for your, um, folders. Um, the Whitney Point GTA for a fun kickoff to the January thirty, on January thirty-first, um, to the annual park program. Which will include a spirit week February twenty-second through twenty-fifth and with awards and celebrations on February twenty-fifth. Uh, Mr. D'Imperio and a TRA Drama Club for their great performance of Matilda Junior, the musical, had held on January twentieth and twenty-first. In the TRA auditorium and to all the people who are involved in helping that out, incredible group of volunteers. Um, Whitney Point High School students Holden Maslin and Caitlin Merlin for their roles in Adventure Prize, a company started by fourteen students to the, uh, of the broom tag of Bosse's New Visions Business Academy. Had conflicts, I couldn't go, but I know that their business was very cool. Um, and they sold lots. Um, Holden was the marketing lead and Caitlin was the supply chain specialist. Also on the agenda, we have the Whitney Point GTA for a successful father-daughter dance held on Friday, um, February tenth. And, uh, Whitney Point High School student athlete is Bill Peel for qualifying and participating in the section four girls wrestling championship final tournament held on Saturday, February eleventh at Vision Arena in Dayton.
Great.
I have to say the father-daughter dance, my granddaughter went with her dad and she said, Graham. It was great, the music was like being at a concert. She had a really good time, you know, the.
I sent a lot of wonderful pictures, you know.
Like the most back-to-normal one, you know, I mean, like, you know, things, the kids are that, you know, a lot of kids are, I'm so glad I just managed to do this back in this way.
And I always say that out of everything I've ever done in this community, the father-daughter dance was almost always my favorite. And three daughters going through, I was there a lot, so I'm glad that it's going and it's going well.
Well, I saw all the little girls out at the little restaurant having dinner with their dads, so I thought that was wonderful. They need to have that role model in new lives.
Okay, old business, there is none. And now we come to a budget presentation. So I'm wondering if I get up, am I gonna be too far from now? If you get up, I don't think so. We don't have mics, it's gonna reason them. Okay, so this is budget presentation number one, here we are in budget season. Um, this is an overview for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and Zach did cover some of the things that we're gonna talk about, but we're going a little. More depth and specificity for our budget this year, what it's gonna look like for us. Just to recap, um, in this past year, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three's budget, um, was thirty-eight million, seven hundred eighty-seven, seven hundred forty-five dollars approximately. Um, we had a spending increase that was seven hundred and fourteen, eight hundred and fifty, seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, almost seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And as Zach mentioned, um, we had a tax levy increase of zero percent. Um, our spending increase was one point eight eight percent, but we were able to swing that without. Further burdening the, um, uh, the community with increased tax rate. Just as a matter of record, it's always good to notice this number changes a little bit, but one percent. Um, we go out with a one percent increase, that gets us about eighty-five, um, thousand dollars each year. That's, you know, it changes a little bit, but that's about what it is, what it was, definitely was what it was last year. And this is a nice reminder, and again, Zach just talked about some of this, but the distribution of revenue. Um, we are stating building aid, transportation, Bosse's categorical aids, all those aids we just talked about. Um, seventy-five point eight one eight percent of our budget approximately each year. So we are very, very dependent on state aid. Uh, in good years, which this is a good year, that's great news and tough years for the state, that's tough for us. Um, it also makes it very hard for us to plan moving forward. Um, because, uh, as I mentioned, you know, you, you, you really can't go out to the public and say, you need to fill this gap for us because the state's having a tight year. Um, you know, we can, it can be, uh, you know, very difficult for us when, when things get tough there. Um, the, the tax levy from our local community is about twenty-two percent of our budget. Um, other revenues about one point four nine and fund balance about one point two nine. Distribution of expenditures, and again, Zach already talked about a lot of this, but you're a people business. Um, it is, uh, you know, largely salaries and benefits. If we see those two, first two columns, that's where it costs us most money. We do spend quite a bit on Bosse's, um, that is, uh, a win for us generally because it helps us be able to offer our students things that we wouldn't be able to have in our districts if the. If they were just here, but also we get aid back on, on those funds that we spend. Um, our debt, uh, as Zach mentioned, um, that is something also that we have to expend for projects that we, um. You know, endeavor to keep our district in good shape, um, for the community. Um, and we also get funds back on that, and then everything else is all the other expenditures that we have to, uh, take care of to run this district. So we've talked about this every year, our ongoing budget goals, whenever we look at the numbers, um, we are always thinking about focus on education, that's what we're here for. Um, to build a sustainable budget, and as, as I said, sometimes that can be tricky because if you're dependent on the ebb and flow of what's happening and, and at the state. Um, and sometimes the federal, uh, government also impacts that. Um, it can be hard, but that's always what we have an eye to and then develop a reasonable tax levy, so because we understand that, um. Again, in our community, you can't just have things change dramatically and expect the, the, uh, the community to pick up. New York State Executive School Aid Summary, this is where the good news comes in that, uh, we are promised. That finally will be made whole with foundation aid, and if those of you've been around, remember those charts where we had the gap elimination and we had, you know, we were always, uh, in a hole essentially for what we were supposed to get for foundation aid. And again, when it comes to our district where we are so dependent on that aid, it has. Proven to give us some very difficult years, um, over that span. So, uh, in the governor's proposed budget, uh, we are supposed to be made whole. Districts receiving a three percent, uh, increase, which would include us. Um, uh, and are gonna have some stipulations on, you get the minimum anybody can receive is three percent and we are gonna be above that. And I'm gonna talk about some stipulations that come with the funding. Um, so all districts are supposed to be at least at a hundred percent for foundation aid, uh, moving forward this year. Two hundred and fifty million dollars of the two point seven million dollars that the state is allocating for foundation aid, um, is to be set aside for high-impact tutoring. Um, this is kind of a new thing with the state where they sort of say, okay, we're gonna give you all this money, but you have to use, use it for this. So you can't use it for the general functioning of the things that you're already doing. You have to make sure that you attend to whatever this is. Um, in, in high-impact tutoring, what we know about that is that it can't. You know, in the early, this role, in the early understandings of what this is gonna look like, but it. Looks like it cannot supplant anything that you're doing now. It has to be something targeted and evidence-based that you're gonna do moving forward, specifically targeting students in, uh, three through eighth grade. Um, because that's where, you know, especially post-pandemic, we've seen the, the biggest hits, both developmentally students in those years. First grade, second grade, third grade, where it's so critical for their literacy development. Um, that, that, they're now in that age stand where those gaps are, have become really evident. Um, community schools is another set aside that we've already had, that's gonna continue. Um, and there's no, uh, underlying formula changes or direction for future foundation aid, aid formula. So we don't know, you know, moving forward, there's still a lot of unanswered questions, Chris.
Joey, before you go there, so you said, um, no, uh, aid that we already are doing, but.
That's what we're told, that it can't supplant anything you're already doing, it has to be something additional.
Okay, so what we're doing right now in the CEA with like Lori Ward and Chris Magriel. Would that be something?
That's a question we have, so we have things that we're doing right now because we have recovery funds.
Right.
That we are not within our general funding. That are extra. For the same reason that they're proposing this, so we don't know the answer to whether that's. This would be considered supplanting that if we had done it, even though we're doing with temporary funds. So we're not, those are some of the, the, uh, questions that we and all other districts have to get answered.
And you probably haven't heard whether or not you could hire possibly retired teachers who might not need to have a big.
In the conversations I've been part of, we think so, it's just that question that you just asked is exactly the thing. If we've been doing it with temporary funds, because we've been doing many things like this creatively, knowing that those funds will end. Is that gonna be considered something that we can't do again? I, you know, we're not sure what the answer to that is.
Thank you.
I hope that. Also too.
Thanks.
So actual foundation increases and projected increases. Um, so again, what we're talking about is projected, so this hasn't been approved yet, this is in the proposed budget. But you can see that through the years, um, the increases in, uh, in foundation aid that have happened from the state in twenty twenty, uh, and to twenty twenty-one, you can see there was nothing, that was the COVID. Everything stopped, we don't know what's gonna happen time, and there was no increase, uh, to foundation aid in that year. And that this year, making, you know, promising to make districts whole is a dramatic increase at the state level. Two point seven billion dollars. New York State Executive Budget, uh, School Aid Summary, what's missing? Um, changes or clarifications to zero emission bus mandate, we still don't know what's gonna happen with that. There's that, a mandate is out there, a lot, there's a lot of talk about whether they're gonna push that back. Uh, but the big question is how, you know, if we're really gonna have to do this, how in the world are we gonna fund this? Um, there's no answers to that, um, in what we're hearing from the state right now. And then also funding for universal meals, which there's lots of lobbying happening across the state, obviously, to make, uh, that a priority. Obviously, if students are, don't have nutritious meals to start their day, you know, everything else that we're talking about, about interventions and instruction and all the things that we do in the school day are not gonna be meaningful. So, uh, those are still big questions and, and there's, like I said, lots of, lots of lobbying from all sorts of groups, so, associated with education, uh, to state on that.
Joey, can I ask a quick question on new vessel meals? And Zach, maybe it's back more to you. I mean, I looked at a few other school districts and you're right, I mean, our poverty level went this way, it didn't. Other schools were getting free and reduced, are getting free lunches totally. There's sort of to stay right where they were. So is it truly because our families don't understand the importance of the applications?
Uh, no, um, and again, I don't wanna talk for Joanne, but it's that direct certification number, that's the biggest number that impacts. Again, uh, if a district qualifies for fair or not. So Binghamton City School Districts qualify because they meet the direct cert number right at the back, boom, that's all you have to look at, everyone gets it. So we don't have a direct certain.
And some schools, like I know that this has been raised a number of times and, and different schools are doing different things and, and a lot of it depends on the size of your school. And exactly what your direct cert numbers are, so for, I know that there's, there are some schools, A and A neighboring school that, um, had. So there, there's an amount that you'll get.
Who I looked at, neighboring school.
There's a, there is an amount that you will get, um, reimbursed for, for, for meals. And then there's generally a gap. And depending on the size, if you're, if you're a smaller school, that gap might not be as much. So. Uh, a particular school district decided they had some funds. That for at least this year, they would, they would close that gap and pay it, and so that all students could get free meals. And so, you know, when we meet, we work with Bosse's to get our numbers all the time. I mean, some of the questions we had is, so why is our poverty going up and our direct cert rate is not? Like, that doesn't make sense, like, so are, you know, are people not tapping into the resources beyond school lunch that they should be? I mean, it's one of the things that we're talking to our community schools people about. Um, are we doing outreach, do people know that they're entitled to SNAP? Do they know that they're entitled to all, you know, the other programs that they could be benefiting from? That's a little worrisome, and maybe they're not.
And I think there is a small population, people come out here, they wanna live off the grid.
And they don't want, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
That does impact direct cert numbers.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
There's also part of the population who. Doesn't understand how to.
Right. And that's.
Tap into those or have a way to.
Do it.
Get down to where they need to go and to start the process.
And that would be the population we're looking at, so because you do need, either need to get online, needs to meet like, I mean, you have, people don't, do not have working phones, do not have internet, do not have reliable vehicles, so.
Public transportation, oh.
Yeah, oh yeah. Yes, yeah, no, right. So and there are some services that will help with that, like get there and things like that, but you still have to have some way to communicate to, to make those arrangements. So, I mean, that, if that, if that's an issue, we certainly wanna tackle that. Um, but yeah, there's, I mean, there's a lot of big questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, not to go too far off, off the, the budget, but I know that it was mentioned what that gap was and what we would have to pay.
Yeah.
To make up that gap. And it, it just, it was enormous, though some groups can do it. And it it just, it was enormous. Though some groups can do it. It would be impossible.
But we will be checking and checking, you know, and 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 we push on most these all the time to say, you know, how can this be? And what else can we tap into and what are the programs? I mean, we do get free breakfasts and we do have free afternoon snacks for students. We qualify for both those programs. But the, um, the lunches right now, but again, we're going to, we're going to be looking at this at the spring.
But I will reinforce, no students ever deny the lunch thing.
No, definitely not.
Thank you.
Okay, so our state aid projection, what that looks like for us this coming year, um. Foundation aid as, as I just mentioned, in the state is the, is enormous increase that is proposed. And what that would mean for us would be eleven point four two percent increase, which obviously is is wonderful. Um, uh, we would have to have, because, you know, as I said, if you get enough of a increase, you have to have that set aside. And for us, that would be two hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars that we'd have to set aside for this high impact tutoring. Um, which, you know, certainly we're not opposed to, but we just, we need to find out more about how that works. Um, this are some of our other projected numbers, uh, coming up. You, you can see twenty three, twenty four. Um, building aid, uh, it's going down somewhat. I don't know, Zach, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I guess it's kind of that wash. So we have a, a portion of our expense side. Making our debt payment, uh, again, they come back and we match it up with the revenue that comes from the state. So if you see that drop, we're projecting a drop in building aid, it means we're going to have a drop in our debt payments for next year as well.
Um, you can see transportation aid, right? It's that amount changes and that, you know, is is a cost based, um, aid that we get, uh, BOSI's aid, same thing, cost paid. And and that changes, um, depending on the, on the needs of our, our students, private access cost aid that had a pretty significant jump. And that just depends on a student or two, because, um, tuition is for those, for those programs are very expensive. Same thing for public access cost aid that can fluctuate depending on changes in, you know, a few students in our population. And category verbal aids had just a, a slight change. So overall, when you look at all those things, what it's projected in total aid to be a seven point eight percent, uh, increase this coming year. So, you know, again, when we think about that, that's fantastic. But then we also think about, that's it. For whole, and then you have to like think about sustainability ability we bring forward. And, and that this is what's approved in the budget. So our goal again to develop a reasonable tax, reasonable tax levy within the applicable regulations. We are allowed to, you know, we have a maximum allowable levy that's configured every year that we talk about. It's different each year. On that two percent number is not really, uh, what it is. And I think in later presentations, you're going to explain that more fully, Zach. But for this year, we've been told that it's two point seven one percent. That's what it would be. Um, and for us in our district, as we said, one percent gets a eighty five and a half thousand dollars. So two point seven one would be two hundred and thirty one thousand dollars to share information. Um, again, so what we're thinking about, what's our, what does our focus on education mean for us right now? Um, when we're thinking about budget considerations, we're thinking about, like, still looking to expand enrichment opportunities and provide additional support to students in need. So we need to attend students who need, you know, more intensive instruction, uh, more intervention services. But also to make sure that we're offering enrichment opportunities for students so that students in Whitney Point have the same opportunities as students in, in a bigger. Uh, district in another area. Uh, we also need to transition a variety of student career tropical programs. Trying to get our kids, the, again, the kinds of experiences that they're going to need when they leave us here. Um, and that they would be able to be if they had in a bigger district, whether that, you know, there's things that we can do onsite or things that we can do with partnerships. Um, we also obviously are looking at our capital project renovations to make sure that our, our spaces are, um, up to speed. A lot of things are funded for the project, but then we have to then use them in a way that's going to be meaningful for students and, uh, increase student opportunity. Um, we need to continue to provide our students and community with resources and facilities that are top notch and innovative. Um, this, you know, our, this is. Our facilities belong to our community and it is, it is of value to them because they get to use them. But it also impacts their property values, whether people want to live here and work here. And, uh, we have a responsibility to be good stewards for the district facilities. Also, um, to continue to partner and grow all current partnership arrangements throughout the, throughout the district. Again, we're a smallish school district, so we do a lot by leveraging relationships and trying to build partnerships with the universities and other agencies. In our areas so that we can offer more for our families and our students here. So what's next? Um, just like with any, in any budget cycle, we start to schedule administrative directors and supervisors to continue to review programs and services. Um, we look at our BOSI's requests for services, um, to be, uh, make sure that we get incorporated all that, the realities of that into our budget proposal. Um, we continue to monitor what's happening with the governor's budget, see what's, um, changing from the initial proposal. And, um, we hope not too much because it's good news for us this year. And, um, there'll be our next budget update, March fourteenth, and you know, at every meeting from here on out, as you all will know, we'll be talking about our budget.
I just had a quick comment and it kind of, it does kind of pertain to our budget. And it goes back to the lunches because I know that, um. Uh, nobody is turned away, but I, I would, and I know that that gets out in the public and then people might not. If they're not, so if they're not. If they're not reported as being eligible, the district pays the difference and that ends up being an enormous cost. So I have no. Trying very hard to not come across that. Um, if people, I think there should be a bigger push, if you know of anybody that is having a hard time to really push to have them try to find the sources that we get credit for. Because, um, I grew up, I was on free lunch. I'm not going to, it's not a problem. It's not a thing you should be ashamed of. It's just. The people that don't go through or don't qualify and then put that on to the, and say, well, we should all just get it. It comes out of our budget. It comes out of our school budget. And that is a huge hit. So I would just encourage anybody that is in, in a tight spot, please check into it. Because then you can benefit yourself and you can benefit the school. If you just say, well, we're going to get them and we're just not going to pay. That is a huge hit to the school district and it just keeps getting bigger. And like I said, I'm not trying to be a bad person, but please do it the right way. Because unintentionally it comes back and really whacks our district. It's a poor district. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much, Julia. I've watched missions to be able to get my free lunches. Different world.
But most cases, I like to say, it's not the student that's causing the problem. As parents or whatever, but it's not the kid. That we're trying to help in schools, it's still supposed to be about the kids.
Yeah, I know.
That's the point of the point, right?
We have to remember that for all of the reasons that we enumerated before, there are a lot of reasons why the applications don't get thrown out.
I understand.
And so we need to help them be proactive about learning how to. Um. Support that.
Everyone would need to get what they need to have. You know, that's the main thing.
Julian, I didn't see that PowerPoint in the download. Did you guys get it?
We'll get it. So when Stacy comes back, say Stacy, we really missed you.
Yeah, can we tell her about the, uh? I won't, I won't email her. Okay, that brings us to the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion? So thank you, Kathy. And a second.
Awesome.
Thank you, Brian. I'm staying. Yep. All those in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Any opposed? And Chris is abstaining.
I don't worry.
Sorry.
Just take it out of pay.
Okay. Okay, appointment. Um, Amanda Sore, interesting agent at CBO for the twenty two, twenty three school year. May I have a motion?
Will move.
Thank you, Eddie. And a second.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? I'm assuming this is because of the change.
Yeah, there's a point I wanted for your meeting, I got internal promoters at CBO, so this is the replacement for her.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved the appointment of Heidi Baron, term substitute for twenty two, twenty three school year, effective January thirtieth, twenty twenty three. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Chris. And who is this? Um, Heidi is, uh. Taking a spot, um, that Amanda is. Being vacant. Okay. Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved the appointment of Danielle Gamm, part-time teacher's aid, effective February fifteenth, twenty twenty three. May I have a motion? Thanks, Brian. And a second.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Is this a new perception? Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved the appointment of Brenda Ashcroft, part-time teacher's aid, effective February fifteenth, twenty twenty three. May I have a motion?
Will.
I have Kathy and Chris. Any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Anne Clark, part-time service helper, effective February fifteenth, twenty twenty three. They have a motion. So moved. Thank you, Chris. And a second.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments?
This is the position that was officially invited via freedom, who was now secretary of the CBA.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstain? I'm going to move to the addenda. And we are going to start with the appointment on the back. Approved the appointment of Amanda Burns, Assistant Principal. Um, contingent upon completion of certification, effective February fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Does that need to specifically say at the TRA?
Not right.
Okay. May I have a motion? So. Thank you, Kathy. And a second.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Questions or comments? Amanda's here. You want to say something real quick?
Yeah.
Sure, go for it.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to say, I, I'm just honored that I was chosen by the committee. Um, it's been a really fun adventure. Mr. Sweeney's been a great mentor. Everybody at the TRA is very welcoming. So I'm excited to help the TRA meet. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And we are going to continue with the addenda and do the retirement resignations. Approved the retirement resignation of Dan Sweeney, principal, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. May I have a motion?
So, no.
No. I tried to skip over it, Anne, but I thought you would be really upset if I did. Um, could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments? How many pages did that fall?
Yeah, well, I had to cut out a lot. Um, so, yes, Sweeney came to work in Whitney Point in nineteen ninety four as a high school special education teacher. He came to us after he had done a little stint as a social studies teacher, but then decided his passion was with special ed. In nineteen ninety nine, he did his administrative internship in at the CEA and then became the high school assistant principal in two thousand and one. And then. You think that'd be enough for people, uh, to be jumping around. And then he was brought to what was then the middle school in two thousand and four to help us during a little bit of a rocky time there. So he led the middle, what was then the middle school slash intermediate school through the transition to what became the Typhus Younger Riverside Academy. Encompassing grades four through eight. And he did that until twenty twelve, when he became Director of Special Services. In twenty seventeen, after being the Director of Special Services for that many years, um, he decided that he needed to spend a little more time working more directly with students. Um, so then he became the High School Principal. This year, at, uh, at my request, um, he decided to help us out again in the district and go to TRA. And revisit his role as principal of that building and we're very appreciative of that. I don't know if there's been anyone else in our district who's worked in as many, uh, different areas as Dan has. He's worked in all three buildings and, um, also at the district level. Uh, he's an incredibly hardworking, giving, uh, person who never avoids a challenge. Um, throughout his various roles, he has positively impacted countless students, families, members of our faculty and staff. Um, every day and everything he does, he has the most altruistic of motivations. He is revered for being strong and stalwart as a leader, but he's also deeply thoughtful and caring. And rarely does anything without extremely careful consideration to make sure it's the most right thing for everyone involved. Like, he can appear to some as being very serious. And some have told me that they even find him initially intimidating, which sometimes comes in handy. Anyone who knows him knows he's tremendously kind, generous, and also very funny. It is hard for me to adequately convey how strong a passion Dan has for teaching and learning and how genuine is his belief in the capacity of each person to grow and progress. His impact in Whitney Point cannot be quantified. All I can do is express my personal professional appreciation and convey the sincere and deep gratitude of the school district. I wish you best, Dan.
And that's not even everything that any of us could say about you, Dan. That's, it's. You have really affected so many people, so many parts of the district and we very much thank you for your time here. And. It's going to be tough to see you go.
Yeah, I want to thank you also for time that my kids were here and interaction that we had with you. You know, wonderful, you know, times where for us.
And Dan, I still have a folder in my. Office. I use it every year I teach because a few years ago I asked you to come and present when you were. The special education coordinator and show my students what it means to be part of that process. And I still use your PowerPoint and it's still affecting every new teacher that I get the opportunity to.
I, I just would like to mention that. Mr. Sweeney, you are a true gentleman. And personally, for myself. I have the utmost respect for you as a human being and as a professional, not just in our district, but a lot of places I've been. I've seen you in action and as much as we don't want to see you go, I mean, that listing, holy cow, you deserve a break. And, and you really have earned the respect of, of a community, um, people. And you really do reserve, deserve to have, uh, a nice retirement. Thank you for everything that you've done and, uh, kind of represented us across this community and everywhere. So we're all better because you're here in your position. You make us look great.
Yeah, I remember you. We went to a very sober event for one of the students and I remember you being there. And you standing up to speak about this child. And it was so moving. I'll never forget it. I will not. And it would, you knew how much you cared about the children just by what you said. And you were there for my younger ones too, when they were in school. So thank you so much. Thank you. And enjoy, enjoy your retirement.
Mr. Sweeney. I want to thank Dan for his friendship. We've been friends a long time. Worked with the kids a lot. And. His personal attention to detail. Is immense. I'm talking about on an individual level. Not just a different ministry. So you're pretty special, but I hope you have charitable retire.
I think he still lives in the school district, doesn't he?
I'm just treating you like.
We might be a board member. And just to, just to end on a happier note. Two quick things that I remember happening when you came back to the high school, was it two thousand seventeen? I happened to be here for some reason for the first day that. Students were at school and you had been outside and you were wearing a dark suit and you had sunglasses on. And I had a student come up to me who knew me from the library and said. I have the Secret Service here. And for the rest of their tenure, when they were referring to you, to me, they called you Secret Service man. And the other one is, is a story that I heard, um, that. And the other one is, is a story that I heard um, that Mr. Sweeney went on one of the very first Washington D C trips with the eighth graders and had to purchase shirts when he was down there because he discovered that he had packed everything but shirts to wear while he was there. I don't know if that's true or not, but it was a fairly reliable source, but just to show that there is humor there and humanity, and this is a tough one. So thank you. All those in favor with huge regrets? Are we gonna let him talk? Okay, yes. We are.
I won't say much. I do want to say how much your words do mean to me, though. I I appreciate everything that was just shared. Um, when I was twenty-four years old, I was living in Nassau County on a little postage stamp, and I knew I wanted to live rural and live, you know, and raise my family elsewhere. So I came upstate uh, for a weekend, and then I had four interviews, and I was offered all four positions, so I really looked at the districts closely. But at the time in Whitney Point, um, there were two special education positions open in the middle school and high school. So I was interviewed by both George Brush and Norm Kreske, if anybody remembers those names.
They do.
Oh, yeah. And after a lot of conversation with them, I came back for a second conversation. They, they convinced me that Whitney Point is a place, is the place that I wanted to come to if I was willing to work hard and truly make a difference because it's a place where students and families need good people in their lives. And that's really what sold me, and that's really what has motivated me to come back year in, uh, year in and year out. So I'm very grateful for all the opportunities that Whitney Point Central School District has offered me. I've had a wonderful career. I couldn't ask for more, and I thank you for all the support that I've had over the years.
You could, but, you know. All those in favor with huge regrets? Any opposed? Any abstain?
Congratulations.
Okay, approve the resignation of Shannon Ferraro, elementary teacher, effective March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. That's huge, too. They have a motion? Thank you, Eddie and Chris. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, resignation of Becky Wilcox, teacher's aide, effective March eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. They have a motion? Thank you, Chris. In a second? Thank you, Brian. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, that listens back to our regular agenda. Prove the following, two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three extracurricular advisor, community service club, Nita Tuffey. They have a motion, so move. Thank you, Kathy. Then a second? Chris? We were like at the same time. Any questions or comments?
Um, maybe stepping in this.
Um, any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Resolution of the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District from Shenango, Portland, and Tioga Counties, New York, the District, authorizing the submission of two propositions to be voted upon by the qualified voters of said district at the annual meeting thereof to be held May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Be it resolved by this Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District from Shenango, Portland, and Tioga Counties, New York, as follows. Section one, at the annual meeting of the qualified voters of the Whitney Point Central School District from Shenango, Portland, Tioga Counties, State of New York, the District, we held on May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the following two propositions shall be submitted to be voted upon in addition to the proposition approving the budget for the district's two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four fiscal year. Proposition number two, acquisition of buses. Resolve that the Board of Education, the Board of the Whitney Point Central School District, the District, is hereby authorized and directed to purchase three new seventy-one passenger diesel buses at cost not to exceed five hundred eighty thousand, four hundred seventy dollars and two new thirty-five passenger gas buses at a cost not to exceed two hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars and to expend therefore not to exceed the estimated total cost of seven hundred ninety-seven, three hundred sixty-six dollars, including incidental expenses in connection therewith, and that such sum or so much thereof as may be necessary shall be raised by the levy of tax upon the taxable property of said school district and collected in annual installments as provided by section four one six of the education law. And in anticipation of such tax, shall the Board of Education be authorized to issue bonds or other obligations of the school district in the aggregate amount of up to seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars. Proposition number three, Capital Reserve Fund, two thousand and twenty-three. Resolve that the Board of Education, the Board of the Whitney Point Central School District, the District, is hereby authorized and directed to A, establish a reserve fund pursuant to education law section three, six, five, one, to be known as the Capital Reserve Fund, two thousand and twenty-three, for the purpose of financing in whole or in part additions, alterations, renovations, or other improvements to existing district's buildings and facilities, construction of new buildings or facilities, or the acquisition of lands or interest in lands for district purposes, including the construction, reconstruction, or improvement of playgrounds, athletic fields, recreation areas, parking areas, roadways, sidewalks, and other site improvements connected to such buildings and facilities, and the acquisition and installation of machinery, equipment, apparatus, or furnishes required for the purpose thereof, and with the ultimate amount of such reserve fund not exceeding ten million dollars plus any approved earnings on amounts deposited in such reverse reserve fund, the probable existence of said reserve fund being fifteen years, but said reserve fund to continue in existence for a stated purpose until liquidated in accordance with the education law and the sources from which funds shall be obtained per said reserve fund being one, current and future unappropriated fund balances from the general fund of the district as directed by the Board of Education, two, appropriations authorized by the voters from time to time, three, fund balances transferred from other reserve funds of the district as may be authorized by the Board of Education or by the voters of the district from time to time in accordance with applicable state law, and four, state aid is directed by the Board of Education from time to time, and B, transferred to said capital reserve fund, the entire balance on deposit in said district's existing capital reserve fund established pursuant to education law section three, six, five, one, pursuant to proposition approved by the qualified voters of said district on May twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. Section two, the district clerk is hereby authorized and directed to include within the notice of said annual meeting required to be published and posted by the district, a statement to the effect that the proposition set forth in sections one and two of this resolution will be voted upon at such annual meeting, which notice shall contain the full text of each such proposition. Section three, this resolution shall take effect immediately. May have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second? Um, Tom? Any questions or comments?
I have a few. Um, again, just for more information for the board. Uh, the first one on the bus proposition, I think you'll notice that amount is far higher than anything with that in the past. Um, and unfortunately, that's just our normal bus replacement schedule. It's five large buses. Um, the cost of a bus has gone up significantly this past year. I actually was pretty shocked at that number myself. Uh, we always buy these off the sea contract with our one vendor. Um, I had our transportation director reach out to other um, companies that sell buses, and uh, believe it or not, this was actually the lowest price that we could get. Um, so that's the cost of buying diesel buses these days. Again, an electric bus is around four hundred thousand for one. So I think it's just again, overall, we're talking about inflation and costs are rising. This is part of it. We try to keep, keep that number around five hundred fifty thousand. In reality, this is going to be a bump up this year. Um, but again, uh, over time, hopefully we have that replacement schedule uh, sync back up. Again, if we go to the electric bus route, everything's going to be another shock to the system. But I just wanted to put some context in it. Uh, we didn't just take that number and run with it. We didn't run it around. It is a valid number for a replacement. Um, the capital reserve fund, um, this one, uh, we initially did the capital reserve fund in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, that had a ten-year life on it. So when we do these, the board, the resolution sets that amount. Uh, we never had um, a capital reserve fund like that in the past. So in two thousand and fourteen, when we made that capital reserve fund, it was a ten-year uh, term and a limit of up to seven million dollars. Um, and again, that's kind of, you can go up to seven million, but you can also tap into it for capital projects, and that's what we have done. Um, that's why this latest project, we actually used two point seven million of that capital reserve fund. That's why when we go out with capital construction projects and we save the zero tax impact, we're using that two point seven million dollars to offset that uh, additional tax impact. So again, with that, capital reserve fund expiring, we have about uh, one point two million currently in there. Um, again, it it's obviously recommended. It's a savings account. Again, it has to be uh, voted on by the public for use. Uh, it makes a lot of sense to uh, renew that reserve fund. That's really what this resolution does, renewing that reserve fund. But we're gonna bump it up to fifteen years, a little bit longer uh, life, and the amount went from seven to ten million. Which again, um, in theory, if we max that out sooner, we would go back out uh, for a vote to increase it accordingly. But in reality, right now, the situation, I mean, we saw in the presentation, we're getting through two million hours of foundation aid, we may put a good chunk of the money of next year or two into that capital. So at least we have that uh, there, you know, for the future. Um, and really, again, just sustain capital projects and to really make sure when we do these uh, renovations, there's no impact to the public. That's kind of how we have the structure.
On the, the bus, it's on a large bus, it's a small. And all our addresses, you know?
Large buses, uh, yep. Um, I think we have the six propane ones are large, but we're actually trying to get those out of the currently, um, we're having some trouble with them in general. This uh, never quite lived up to expectation, not reliable, and don't go as far as a diesel bus.
All the rest is no gas.
No, only small, yes.
Any other questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Whitney Point Central School District noticed a school budget hearing and annual budget vote. Whereas the New York State education law prescribes the requirements for the annual school board election and budget vote along with other propositions that may be submitted. Whereas the New York State education law prescribed certain notice requirements, therefore, be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools that a public hearing, budget vote, election of board members, and consideration of submitted propositions shall occur as stated on the notice of school budget hearing and annual budget vote as set forth below. And it is further resolved that except as here and after provided, the official notice of the aforesaid public budget hearing and annual district meeting and election shall be in the following form. Whitney Point Central School District, notice of school budget hearing and annual budget vote. Notice is hereby given that the annual meeting of the inhabitants of the Whitney Point Central School District, at which time will occur the ballot budget vote, the annual election of Board of Education members, a vote upon certain propositions, including a proposition for the purchase of buses and a proposition authorizing the establishment of the Capital Reserve Fund and to authorize the levy of taxes will be held at the high school cafeteria, ten Kybel Road, Whitney Point, New York, on Tuesday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, from one P M to eight P M for the purpose of transacting of such business as is authorized by the education law. Notice is also given that the proposed two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four school budget will be presented at the annual budget hearing to be held on Tuesday, May second, two thousand and twenty-three, at six P M at the high school auditorium, ten Kybel Road, Whitney Point, New York. Notice is also given that a copy of the statement of the amount of monies which will be required from the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four school year for school purposes may be obtained by any school district resident during the seven days prior to the budget hearing, Tuesday, May second, two thousand and twenty-three, except Saturday or Sunday upon request at any school district building and the district office, school district offices between the hours of seven forty, eight forty-five A M and three forty-five P M at any public library or free associate library within the district and on the school district's internet website. A copy of such statement may be obtained by any resident in the district at any school district building during the fourteen days immediately prior to the annual meeting, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and on the day of the election, except Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays between the hours of seven forty-five A M and three forty-five P M. Notice is also given that absentee ballots are available from the office of the district clerk by mail or in person. Mail requests must be received seven days before the vote at P O box two four nine, Whitney Point, New York, one three eight six two. Requests made in person must be made at the district office, ten Kybel Road, Whitney Point, New York, between seven forty-five A M and three forty-five P M, Monday through Friday, and must be made no later than the day before the vote. A list of persons to whom absentee ballots have been issued will be available for inspection in the district clerk's office during each of the five days preceding the vote, except Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays during regular office hours until the day of the election. Notice is also given that military voters who are not currently registered may apply to register as qualified voters of the school district. Military voters may request an application to register as a qualified voter in the school district. Military voter registration application form must be received in the office of the district clerk no later than five P M on April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. In order for a military voter to be issued a military ballot, the school district must have received in the office of the school district clerk, a valid ballot application no longer than five P M on April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. A military voter may designate a preference to receive a military voter registration, militarily, military ballot application or military ballot by mail, assembly transmission, or electronic mail in the request for such registration, ballot application, or ballot. Such designation shall remain in effect until revoked or changed by the military voter. Ballots for military voters shall be mailed or otherwise distributed no later than April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Notice is also given that petitions nominating candidates to the office of member of the Board of Education must be filed with the school district clerk between the hours of seven forty-five A M and three forty-five P M, not later than April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at the district office, high school building, ten Kybel Road, Whitney Point, New York, one three eight six two. Candidates must be a citizen of the United States, eighteen years of age, able to read and write, a legal residence of the school district, and one year prior to the election, not an employee of the Whitney Point Central School District, and remain a qualified school district voter throughout the term of office. The following vacancies are to be filled. A three-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, presently held by Kathleen Driscoll. A three-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, presently held by Eddie Maslin. A three-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, presently held by Thomas Kaspar. A one-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, presently held by Brian Jucker. Each petition must be directed to the school district clerk, be signed by at least twenty-five qualified voters. Shall state the residence of each signer, shall state the name and residence of each candidate, and whether such candidates are nominated for full terms or unexpired portions of such terms. The candidates receiving the largest number of votes shall be declared elected in accordance with education law, section two, zero, one, eight. The, no person shall be nominated by petition from more than one specific office. Notice is also given that in addition to the proposed district budget for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four fiscal year and school year, which will appear on the ballot as proposition number one, the following proposition will be submitted to the voters, which will appear on the ballot as proposition number two. Proposition number two, acquisition of buses, shall the Board of Education, the Whitney Point Central School District, located in the counties of Brom, Shenango, Portland, and Tioga, New York, be authorized to purchase three new seventy-one passenger diesel buses at a cost not to exceed five hundred eighty thousand, four hundred seventy dollars and two new thirty-five passenger gas buses at a cost not to exceed two hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars and to expend therefore not to exceed the estimated total cost of seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars, including incidental expenses in connection therewith, and that such sum or so much thereof as may be necessary shall be raised by the levy of tax upon the taxable property of said school district and collected in annual installments as provided by section four one six of the education law. And in anticipation of such tax, shall be the Board of Education be authorized the, to issue bonds or other obligations of the school district in the aggregate principal amount of up to seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars. Notice is also given that in addition to proposition, proposition numbers one and two, the following proposition will be submitted to the voters, which will appear on the ballot as proposition number three. Proposition number three, capital reserve fund, two thousand and twenty three. So the Board of Education, the Whitney Point Central School District, be authorized to A establish a reserve fund pursuant to education law section three, six, five, one, be known as the capital reserve fund, two thousand and twenty three, for the purpose of financing and whole or in part additions, alterations, renovations, or improvements to existing district buildings and facilities, construction of new buildings or facilities, or the acquisition of lands or interests in lands for district purposes, including the construction, reconstruction, or improvement of playgrounds, athletic fields, recreation areas, parking areas, roadways, sidewalks, and other site improvements connected to such buildings and facilities, and the acquisition and installation of machinery, equipment, apparatus, or furnishings required for the purposes thereof, with the ultimate amount of such reserve fund not to exceed ten million dollars, plus any accrued earnings on amounts deposited in such reserve fund, the probable existence of said reserve fund being fifteen years, but said reserve fund to continue in existence for its stated purpose until liquidated in accordance with the education law and the sources from which funds shall be obtained per said reserve fund being one, current and future unappropriated fund balances from the general fund of the district as directed by the Board of Education, two appropriations authorized by the voters from time to time, three fund balances transferred from other reserve funds of the district as may be authorized by the Board of Education or by the voters of the district from time to time in accordance with the applicable state law, and four state aid is directed by the Board of Education from time to time, and B transferred to said capital reserve fund the entire balance on deposit and said cap in the district's existing capital reserve fund established for sermon pursuant to education law section three, six, five, one, pursuant to a proposition approved by the qualified voters of said district on May twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. Please take further notice that any other propositions that are required to be included for vote at the annual meeting shall be submitted in writing by March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty three, by means of petition signed by at least twenty five qualified voters and shall state the residence of each signer. Any propositions may be rejected by the Board of Education if the purpose of the proposition is not within the hours of the voters or where the expenditure of money is required by the proposition and such expenditures fail to include the necessary specific appropriation. Resolve that the district clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice to be given in the form of herein above prescribed by publishing the same in the press and sun bulletin, a newspaper having general circulation within the district four times during the seven weeks preceding the date of the annual district meeting and election, provided however that the district clerk is hereby authorized without further board action in her discretion in consultation with the district's legal counsel to amend said notice as necessary to assure compliance with applicable law. May have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. In a second.
I'll second.
So thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
Nice job. Very nice.
Well done. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Be resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District nominate three members to the Brum Delaware Tyoga Board of Education Services. The Brum Delaware Tyoga Board of Education currently has two three year positions vacant. The board may nominate individuals at large, leave a nomination vacant, and or nominate Peter Nowacki or Michonne Stewart, who are seeking reelection for the three year positions.
I nominate Peter Northgate for nominee one.
And do I have a second for that?
Sure.
Thank you, Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? And nominee two?
I'm nominating um, Sean Stewart. For his room, Delaware Tyoga Board.
In a second.
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Superintendent, something? That's a really quick update. Um, the instructional calendar for this school year has a hundred and eighty five days. It was labeled a hundred and eighty six days. But it was always a hundred and eighty five days, and it's mapped out as a hundred and eighty five days. It's the amount of days that Boses had on their calendar. We have to be in sync with because we have a number of students who attend there, so um we're watching the days that we use. Um, we only have two left. Um, and you know, it's going to be warm this week, so I don't know. But maybe we'll make it, but you know that March always brings something, so um, we just have to put it on your radar and um we'll, if we start, if we use another day, then we're going to start sending families to give them a heads up to the fact. You know, we, we have two choices. One is either to have, start for the take back, take back days, which our next take back day would be the day before Memorial Day weekend, because it's four day weekend for families. Or we could potentially have a remote day. So um we're in discussions about that. So a number of school districts have done that. Harper'sville did it at the beginning of the year because they had a warm meeting break. Um, it's in Pennsylvania. If you look at the E and G closings, um, you'll see that a number of them are saying remote days because they often have to close so much more often. So it's something that we're looking at.
Anything else?
No, and then we'll have the uh the next year's instructional calendar because it's been approved by the Boses board, and that is a hundred and eighty six days. Thank you.
Okay.
For next year.
That brings us to our second opportunity for comments from the public. Please remember that on the introduction that I read at the first one is still in effect for this one as well. Does anybody have anything that they would like to comment upon? Okay. That brings us to Board of Education comments.
Just a reminder that the legislative breakfast is on the uh calendar for Friday in March, uh, February twenty fourth with March third being the snow day. Very banner today. So um, you know, our legislators will be there. They're going to be talking a lot about the electric buses and transportation aid, and so it is an opportunity for us to um be involved in what the city has made in our schools.
Are you, will you be attending?
I will be attending. I have to talk.
Then I trust you to, and we'll take good notes. Take notes, and I also trust that you will um express an opinion that is appropriate for the.
Doubt about that.
Yeah.
This is, this is.
I know.
This is what I would like to attend, but I can't commit for anything on Fridays right now, so. Anyway.
Uh, I was looking on the website today, and I don't go there. But I was looking for the vision statement.
We were too.
Okay, and I wasn't alone. Another elderly gentleman looking for it with me. And we didn't find it.
No, it's not. They, they did a redesign. We have a new platform, and we just were saying the same thing. Where is our vision statement? Where is our mission statement?
And I, because the guy asked him, well, is it in the school? And I says, I'm sure it is. And so I went looking today, and it's all well posted here. But it needs to, you know, we should be on the website.
Yeah. Yes.
And I always like to say, the point is about the kids.
That's right.
That's the point, what you point, so somewheres. I just think that you never can change what our objective is here. Is it's all got to come back to the kids. I don't care if it's buses or whatever, got to come back to the improvement in their opportunity. So.
One of the complications of changing platforms here on websites. One of them.
One, I'm glad you're already aware of it. That's what I'd like to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got that.
Pretty, I think, but we referred somebody to the website. Look, he's right on our website, and then we went, oh, no.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's how I found. That's.
Any other?
True.
I want to thank you for your presentation, I know it's wrestling. That was fabulous. That was absolutely fabulous. Your enthusiasm is just, is, it's just wonderful, and I can't remember back when my son was wrestling. Uh, he's forty three years old. Doesn't age me, but um, when he was wrestling, I know, and uh, he was at a tournament. I can't remember the tournament was, but they were all sitting there waiting to go out, and a girl came on. And the team that was wrestling at that time, the boy didn't want to wrestle. And it was really sad. And I was, I remember sitting there so long ago saying, one day, this is not going to be, one day, girls are going to be out there doing the same thing. So she did end up wrestling. There was someone that came forward and said, I will wrestle, you know, in that weight group, and he did. And she won. She, she did. And uh, which was a, you know, a plus for women, but um, I'm really glad that you're doing this, and thank you very much.
Great. Absolutely.
Definitely.
Brian or Tom, anything this evening? Okay. Before we adjourn, um, any students that are here, I just wanted to let you know, please make sure that your um name is already on your form, and any one of us up here can sign it. It does not have to be me. So all of that being said, um, we are going to adjourn our public meeting at eight fifteen P M with a motion from
So.
Kathy and Chris. That's a surprise. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
What time is it?
Eighteen.
Wow. I need forty five minutes earlier than I expected. I'm trying to tackle my.
Just so that we don't have any. Even do like two minutes. I don't know.
I don't know where you're.
Yeah. Be quite on. And I'm sure it will.
I got quite a bit of.
I thought you out. Open the beam again. Very quick, it's like one.